If we must.
All right, it is seven o'clock, Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, we are having a public hearing on the recall of elected officials ordinance. Uh, I'm trying to get to where. Explain it, but we've uh. The ordinance hadn't been revised from going going by memory here, Kevin, since two thousand and five.
That's great.
And this is just some small changes to it that we've. That reflect uh. Some things that we were required to change and a little bit of language too. Into it here.
So. Would you like me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Share?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like I said, we're not implying there were any misdeeds among the members of the board by doing this, but that recall has not been, it was adopted in two thousand and five.
Right.
So it's been twenty years since this has actually been looked at. Um, or it's unclear if it's been looked at since then. Um, the state legislature, however, did make changes to the process in two thousand and eleven. And the draft changes that you're seeing here incorporate uh those changes by the legislature. Uh, as well as some additional clarity for the process from staff. The board asked for some um. Appendices to provide context for people who may be looking to do a petition. So we created some forums as part of this too. That is really what this is about. And as you, as this, but since I've been here working with this board, we've been focused a little bit on making sure that we. Review and potentially revise any of the ordinances we have on file. So. We're almost through all of the general ordinances. There's a lot of land use ones that still needs work, but.
Right.
We're almost there on the general.
Does. Anybody have any questions or? I thought you might be here for a review. Comment.
No, I said I will get two comments tonight or questions.
Yeah.
Um, on this one, it's uh, it look like it applies to elected officials. Uh, why isn't the school board? Person included in there?
That's a great question. There is a reason. There's a whole separate state statute on how those are addressed.
So there is a recall process for school boards.
Yeah, that's not in thirty eight, right?
It's like. No, it's in the.
Twenty eight or.
Right, it's whatever title uh s- schools are administered currently. So we can't, we can't address it. And it even says it in our state statute that. And and the state statute that we're looking at here, it even says you can't apply this. For interest.
Got it. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? All right, then we will close the public hearing. And. Is that seven oh three? We will start the select board meeting. Uh amendments to the agenda. Uh, thank you for putting that in your. Right up there too, Kevin. Um, we we want to add. Uh, the L Y's fish committee met this afternoon and we want to just. Add in a discussion on the their recommendation for a repair budget for twenty twenty five. So we can make that.
It's already, I mean, you already have an item on L Y's reserve fund. I think you can just address the issue at that time.
Okay, just help me remember when we get there then, please.
Will do.
All right, minutes from previous meetings, we have three of them. Uh, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Still have a couple of corrections to that one.
But. Are they short enough that I can just take them through this and we can accept them as an end?
Yep, I think so. Uh, let me get down to it. Under six A. The fish ladder agreement. Bob Barkalow is the dam with the Dammer Scott and Mills Fish Ladder Restoration Group, not with the. He may be well with the Dammer Scott River Association as well, but this is not what he was here as. And. The first motion was to appoint. Jim Brinkler and me to the board, to that committee rather.
Oh, boy.
No problem. That was a long discussion anyway.
Okay.
And then the last thing I had on that was twelve adjournment of meeting. It was me.
Says.
It was me.
Okay.
Did they?
I did notice that, but it didn't register.
Register.
Yeah, I don't have the authority to do that.
Did anyone have anything else in the first in those minutes? No, uh, what about the minutes of February tenth? Those were all good. Uh, February twenty fifth. Uh, no, February twenty fourth.
I think that's something.
I did too. Oh, no, I just said a question. So if you have something, go ahead.
Uh, this was the last meeting we had, right? This one where you stepped out?
Yep.
Yeah, the last two. Last two items should be um.
Yep, that's.
Absent.
Not obscene.
Right, that was my question.
Mm hmm. Okay.
Yeah, it was vote four zero with one absent.
Easy enough to modify.
I was adjacent.
You were adjacent. You were just hiding it.
Out of, is it out of the room?
I mean, by adding another member to your family.
That's right. All right, um.
I'll move all three with amendments.
Thank you. Second, all right, seconded by Rufus, um, all in favor. Our passes five, nothing. Shh, public comments on items not on the agenda tonight. We have many. One more time. So, so, oh, wait, you're supposed to identify yourself. We know, but.
David Lovett, thirty Glen Street. I um. Recall in January thirteen, you approved uh the hiring of Costco Bay Advisory. Uh, advisors for the negotiating or doing the prep work for the cable franchise. Uh, contract. And I just wondered, is there an update two months in to the status of that?
Uh, we've been just working on um. Uh, information gathering related to what has been done in the past uh and applying that to them.
Is.
There, we've engaged with the entity.
Okay, is there expectation on a certain date that a contract would be or something we would have to offer to um?
I.
Charter or whatever they're called.
Yeah, the. Conversation we had with the advisors was probably about a six month process for us to go from data or information gathering. To reporting to getting to a revised contract because this work got started. Some years back, be even before I was on board. Um, so we're just kind of uh getting refreshed at this moment, given some of the state legislative changes. That have happened related to this law.
Any uh. Discussion of maybe making the franchise fees retroactive to since we've been out of contract since September of. Twenty-two, I believe, and going back and recouping some of that. Is that part?
Can that be part of this? Pass that around. Yeah, that's a lot.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? All right, if not, then we will go to unfinished business five A special town meeting warrant. Here. Oh, we got a, we got a Michael's A and E got switched around.
Yes, I was gonna mention that, but it's correct on the warrant, just incorrect in my um.
Yeah.
Late night, Friday night, uh, typing.
No problem. Uh, so this is for. Setting a special town meeting for the twenty-fourth. Which is our next meeting. Uh, to. Deal with the ordinance that we just talked about. And to the changes to the Corzoning Code.
That is correct. Yep, and the planning board met um. Two weeks ago, last week, two weeks ago.
We.
I know, I'm, it's terrible.
Yeah.
Um, no, I think it was.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. Planning Board met. Anyway, the planning board is their last meeting.
Yeah.
Whenever that was, uh, held a public hearing on it um. Nothing that address or any changes or concerns related to language that was posed. Um. Or needs to be modified at this stage. So. Public hearings have happened for both of our both ordinances, the recall and now the code code. The code has two separate focuses. One is district standards. Amending the unit floor area, removing the minimum. Um, that was the only feedback we got back from the state in order for us to be in full compliance with what's considered L D two thousand and three. Which uh is about uh allowing for accessory dwelling units whenever there's single family.
Yep.
Um. And then the additional structures is an attempt to address uh. Uh, and continue to allow uh. The Marina uh. Off blood and suns Marina. Um, its ability to continue to operate. Given some of the constraints of the fabrication district, his desire to have some of those additional structures to work on boats in the winter time. He's unable to do it. I believe the intent of the fabrication district was to allow for. Sort of flexibility in the types of structures and the types of work that gets done there. So this would address those issues. And put him in compliance.
So maybe any questions on any of that? Nope, then do I have a motion?
No, I said no.
Oh, no. Okay. A motion to set the warrant as drafted then for March twenty fifth, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Special town meeting starting at seven P M. At the Newcastle Fire Station Community Room here at eight six River Road. And send notice to Michael Titus to inform the inhabitants of the town of Newcastle of said meeting.
Absolutely.
By Tor.
Same.
Seconded by Ben. If no further discussion, then all in favor. Right, passes five with them. Is it enough? All right, Mike, you got your your job cut out for you now. All right, item five B is um. The June tenth. Ballot question. On whether we want to ask residents if they would like to put the annual budget on. On the, the warrant. And vote on it. By ballot, I guess.
Yep, uh, according to our attorney, and this is now in your town manager report I just threw in there um. Hearing from our attorney, this is essentially polling the public. So it's a little looser in terms of the rules about what language could put in there. When I first contacted him about this, he was like, wait, we're gonna ask all of these questions now. I was like, no, no, no.
No.
We're gonna ask, we can want to do it for next year. So. After a little back and forth, uh, we came up with the language, shall the town use referendum voting for town meeting? For the two thousand twenty-six town meeting? It's confusing. It's all heck.
Isn't referendum voting, just that term is confusing.
So. What I'm proposing is we put this out there, ask the public to attend the meeting the twenty-fourth. Get their feedback. You can modify that on the twenty-fourth. And make the motion to. Have whatever language it is that's gonna go on the ballot. And I'll work with Peter about what other words can we use?
Like by ballot or?
Yeah.
Secret ballot.
Secret ballot, something like that. Tending the public media. It just has to be clean language so the public understand what they're voting on.
Right. So I assume this is different. I just was reading in the newspaper, Edgcombe wanted to put the school budget on. Ballot and they were told. That's not legal. So I know they they're looking for another opinion on that perhaps.
That.
Their attorney. So.
Did they?
I.
Well, so.
Is all, this is what I read, so I thought.
Question is, did there every three years they do have to ask publicly, do you want to keep doing it this way or do you want to change the process? And if they say they want to change the process, then then they have to go back and ask the public if they want to change the process back to the old way, which was. Which we're in every year. The voters vote on it. You don't have to do. That extra step where we have a town meeting and then the public meeting. So.
And.
Uh, I think Edgcombe should probably have a conversation with another attorney.
I think that was what was in the newspaper that they were going to do. So I didn't know if just the school budget was different than.
School budget, again, that's that whole, we're in a different title. Title thirty A is municipal, title twenty something is uh school.
Yeah.
Schools, education, and they have very specific rules about how they.
Yeah.
Operate.
I believe there the attorney that they consulted told them they had to have a ch- town charter to be able to do that.
Hmm. And that's, I mean, the town charter concept is if we wanted to fully go to ballot every year. We'd have to have a charter unless the select board. Asked the questions ahead of time, said, let's put the, let's put these on the ballot. Every year you're gonna have to do that if you want to keep doing it this.
Okay.
Next year's way. If assuming it gets, if you want to do it.
Right, I mean, and they had for the same reason. They had much better turnout.
Yeah.
And participation in the voting when they did it by ballot versus at a town meeting.
Yep.
So it's same, same issue that we're facing. All right, then. Does anyone have anything you want to? Discuss further on this or any questions? Does anyone have any questions? Nope, then do I have a motion to set a public hearing March twenty-fourth at seven P M. June tenth. For the June tenth ballot questions.
So.
Moved by Rufus, seconded by Tor. Uh, all in favor. Passes five, nothing. Yeah, that one we'll have to work a little bit on it explaining. Because the terminology gets a little confusing.
Extremely, that's, you know, of course, it's last minute on a. Before a meeting when I'm trying to figure out what words do we use, what words can we use?
Yeah, no problem. All right, then on. Unfinished business, item six A is the Alwys Reserve Fund. Um. I mean, you explained it in here, but we did have, we had a bill from last fall's. They gave us some pictures that they have to do, they found because of freezing and thawing.
That doesn't happen, does it?
Oh, it was only once, only every few winters.
Mm hmm.
But because they're, they have concrete around stones, things expand, contract, and they need to do concrete work every year. And they have found that. They have a lot better luck now with the picture that they sent us was a. A single flat stone in the. The rear, the little.
The transition.
Space between the two schools.
Yes, um, is works a lot better than the little stones because if one of them falls out, the fish just can't seem to figure out how to get up there. The stones aren't flat and smooth, so. So they're slowly replacing those as well as they get the work done. So. Two years ago, I think we spent about, we, the. The combined groups was over eighteen thousand something, I think, on the. The concrete repairs, which can only be done at a very short window of time because they have to shut the water off. Um, and then this year it was around twenty-five thousand dollars. And so this bill, we're just kind of getting caught up. To pay this bill for eight thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And that was for the repairs that we've done last fall. So if.
If I can just ask, but you know off the top of our head, what the total is in that account?
Hundred and twenty-five thousand and change.
We can, we got it covered.
Yeah, great.
So, any questions? Nope, then uh do I have a motion to authorize the use of eight thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars in the Alwys Reserve Fund to reimburse? The Dammer Scott and Mills Fish Ladder Restoration Group for renovations made to the fish ladder from September ninth to October eleventh of last year. So moved by Rufus, seconded by Tom, um, all in favor. All right, passes five, nothing. The other part of this is um when we met today. We discussed. Setting an amount of up to amount that they could spend. In twenty twenty-five for the same thing. There's a lot more work to be done.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if this is an annual maintenance, then.
The impression I got is for a couple more years, it's a fairly large number. And then after that, hopefully, if they do it every year, it'll be a little bit smaller.
Yeah.
Um, and then there's some big projects to do too. They've got to add a couple more ponds. Um, and then dippers or see-through in places. So that's all big stuff coming up, but this is just maintenance that needs to be done every year. So the committee today voted to recommend um. That each of the towns in their group. Commit to up to ten thousand dollars um for repairs for the twenty twenty-five season.
So that's a combination of the Dammer Scott and Mills Restoration. Yeah.
Dammer Scott and Mills Fish Ladder Restoration.
Ladder Restoration, thank you.
And us.
And then each of Noble Brown.
Right, so they would have up to thirty thousand dollars to spend. The the gentleman who does it is available to fit it into his schedule and then. Like there's a hard date that he heads to Mexico for the winter, so. Um, he's not gonna, yeah, so. Uh, so they were comfortable that we wouldn't need more than that. We might probably won't even need that much, but they didn't want to have to come back and ask for. Eighteen hundred dollars from each of the towns later on or something.
Well, that's kind of why I asked the question. Um. I think the. The reserve fund that we have set up specifically for this is the commitment. We literally cannot spend that on anything else.
Mm hmm.
That's all it's for.
Yeah, they're, they do have some big projects coming up.
Sure.
So, and but we will have some money, hopefully, for fish run well this year.
Yeah.
Hmm. Add to what we've got in the reserves in in uh May. Yeah, so. All right, then.
The money in this count is generated from the catching and selling of hellwives.
Right.
So it has.
Yeah.
It, it isn't a taxpayer affected fund, at least until the fish stop coming. But the fish ladder has to be in place for the fish to come and spawn. So.
Right.
It's a relationship of how do you make sure you address the needs of the facility to continue the income at the same time? Addressing the. The fish ladders so you have the fish that you can then sell.
Right, it's a, it's a circle.
Imagine that, circle of life.
But did I understand you to say that? The committee recommended that they wanted the towns to make a. An annual commitment for ten thousand dollars?
Just this year for now?
Is, if it's just this year, it's not a problem.
Right, it's right now it's just this year and then. The impression I got from the people who do all the work. Is that for the next couple of years, it could be around the same amount, but after that, they didn't anticipate that it would be.
Yeah, I just. I hesitate for us to, you know. Take any action on a. Multi-year or something when we don't, we can't in burden or encumber the town. The future town. With it, with any kind of bill into the future.
Mm hmm.
Not knowing if that. You know, fund is gonna run out and then we've made a commitment.
Doesn't seem.
And then that's come from taxes and we can't do that. That's illegal.
Doesn't seem like a big deal to just. Request the. The funds.
No, just every year.
Every year.
Yes, of course.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think that's the.
I was, all I was getting at was that the idea of.
Yeah.
You know, multi-year like, oh, yeah, we're committed to the fish ladder, absolutely.
Thousand dollars a year, every year.
But if for some reason a large project paid up all of those funds in the hellfire fish ladder, we can't sit here and say, yes, in twenty thirty.
Right.
We're gonna make sure there's ten thousand dollars available for the fish ladder. We can do that.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. No, I think it'll be an annual request.
Yeah, it's great.
So, all right, then. Though I think I didn't ask, sorry, you know, my, a motion to authorize the town manager to expend up to ten thousand dollars for fish ladder maintenance from the Alwys Reserve Fund for. Twenty twenty-five.
So.
Move by.
Second.
Like move.
Whatever.
Move by Tor, seconded by Ben.
Paper scissors.
Um, any other questions, anybody? Then all in favor? All right, passes five, nothing. Uh, let's see. Wondering what happened here. Was it in your note, Kevin? Scroll and scroll and scroll and scroll. Okay, so we have the A P warrant. Uh, let's see. Do we, we'll talk about it after, I guess. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five nineteenth A P warrant for one hundred and five thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents?
Done.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Tom. Anyone have any questions about it? Any comments?
The um. Dammer Scott Hardware, the entire department. I'm just curious, aluminum bar, what's going on? What are you guys doing?
I, I'd assume it's probably something. I know Casey's been redoing his office. I'm sure it's some.
It's also the truck, couple pieces on the seventy-four to get it uh. Right smoothly.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what I know has been played with tinkered with by Lucas.
Yeah, I don't know if it was, if it was something that. He was redoing something in his office and had to pick up a bar of some sort or hanger or.
Yeah.
Something like that. I know, I do know that the. First charge. With the bits of. It's abbreviated S T. It's what Chuck, it's. For.
Tires.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the abbreviations make no sense sometimes.
There's a nice little uh sheet of metal chairs out on the sidewalk this last weekend.
There were.
Yeah, they kept on showing up.
Yeah.
You kept taking them and they kept more showed up.
I was tempted, oh my God.
That everybody took except, was there one out there? No, it's gone.
The free one's gone?
I don't know.
I thought they were all free, weren't they?
They were all free.
Yeah.
But the one that has.
The one that has a sign on it.
Stayed there.
That one's got a rusty seat, so maybe nobody wants it. That might end up in the middle recycling bin. But yeah, then it took all of the. Ones that we've put out there.
Oh, yeah. Also noticed that the first of the solar. Checks got written.
And.
That's, that's exciting.
Pails are sitting.
All the stuff that was purchased with that is sitting out back right now. Excellent. Yeah, I saw the truck here today. That's, that's.
That's exciting.
Excellent.
And if there's no further questions, um, all in favor? Right, passes five, nothing. I think that brings it to you, Kevin.
Okay, um. We already touched on the two additional information pieces, so I'll just jump down to the, we have the cemetery and municipal property maintenance contract is out, R F P. Um. We have six cemeteries and several other locations around town that we need help with mowing and debris cleanup and and when. Um, I know our prior contracts just talked about mowing and then we've added things on over the years, so. With, you know, sort of like as a bens.
Yeah.
Um, so I've made this contract fully about addressing all of our current needs. Um, the only one that's not in there is the area bird. Um, the only one that's not in there is the area bird, because I've got a, a separate contract with Bern Bernie, who's willing to do it for the. Cost of maintaining and mower, so. I, I think that's a pretty decent deal.
It's a good deal.
Um.
Does that include the?
Yeah.
Little garden beside the. Corner of Pump Street that's not the one on the town.
It is not currently in this contract.
Okay.
Um, but it is something we'll have to discuss how to address.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and then the other item is the fire station solar panels. They're, they were, all the material were bribed today. Uh, we made some room downstairs, and I wanted to thank Karen and Lucas and um. Casey for stopping in and trying to identify what can we get rid of. So tomorrow. Um, the fire department crew will be here for the regular meeting, but they actually don't have anything on the agenda, because they're doing a fit test. So after the fit test, they're coming over here, so about seven thirty, they're gonna be here to help. Clean out the basement of what we no longer need or uh when no longer has any value. Uh, if there are items that are not things that should just go into a dumpster, we'll look to do a little uh. Um. Pile of things or a, a day or two in a little warmer weather when I'll stand out there, or somebody can stand out there and say, come take this.
Yeah, I know, they, they're gonna probably put all that extra hose out there. People put it around their docks and.
Yeah, you gotta use for an old hose, uh, it can't be pressurized the same way as a fire hose anymore, so it has no value to the fire department. But it could be used for other uses, so. There are some things down there that still have value, just not, not to the necessarily the fire department or town of Newcastle, so. We got some old um. The big old long folding tables.
Yes.
That are so heavy that I, you know, from a worker's comp, I do not want myself or other staff having to deal with in the future, so those can go. Um, a couple other things, but we'll, we'll figure out a way to um find new homes for those that hopefully aren't the dumpster, but. We'll start there. And to Rufus for offering to let us use his.
What time you want the dumpster?
Uh, tomorrow, late afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Fine.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not gonna go low and low. I mean, we already started making a pile out here.
I didn't know if you wanted it here for the, when the volunteer firefighters are here.
Yes, that's when I want it.
Okay, oh, they're here Wednesday.
No, Tuesday, tomorrow.
But not until.
They're not here till after.
Seven thirty, I was hearing seven thirty and thinking, I am.
Oh, that's cause you, you know, work at seven thirty.
Yeah, I was like, I can have it here at seven, no problem.
No.
Oh, and yeah.
I'll get, I'll get it here.
Okay, thanks, yeah, um, I can help give you a ride back or whatever.
Oh, I just leave it.
Right, but then you gotta go home?
No. I leave the dumpster and drive the truck home.
Oh, it rolls off, it totally comes apart.
Yeah.
No kidding.
Yeah.
Double awesome. Thank you.
I know, it's.
Good.
Wow, I was like, we're gonna just chuck it into the back of the truck kind of thing, but no.
It will be ground level.
Oh, amazing.
Wow.
Oh, that makes it even, uh, you can show up at seven tomorrow morning, I'll be here doing it myself. Uh, we applied for a hazard mitigation grant. I had hoped to do two. I only had the, the bandwidth to get one done, and I'm hugely thankful to Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission staff. Cause they assisted me in some of the um wrangling to figure out what, what are the appropriate responses to this. So I'm hugely thankful for them and the work they did to pull that together. Uh, VHB for giving us an estimate for what it might cost to do this. We have another estimate we're supposed to get this week, but the grant was due. Friday, so um I hope that, it goes to the state before it gets finally submitted to the federal government. Through FEMA, so I hope during this time, transition time, I'm able to put in the additional, you know, estimates. So I have a better idea of what this might actually cost.
The, this is for East Old County Road?
This is, yes, this is the low point, right after Academy Hill, going down East Old County Road. That tends to have flooding issues. Uh, which can strand all the residents that live up that direction, so it'd be nice to try to address this. Um, but we need to do soil testing and um. Hydraulic testing, similar to what we had to do with Lynch Road in order to get to a place where we're gonna be able to get some federal funding someday.
So this, uh, two hundred and ten thousand dollars is just for planning?
Yeah, I mean, the engineering work to see what it would look like, some options for us to discuss, cause it, you know. The, the more heavy of an option, the more costly it's gonna be, and that's a discussion and decision by the town. Um, these are both the planning grant and the construction. Later on, we can apply for a construction grant, but it is still a seventy five, twenty five split.
Yeah.
Assuming those programs are still in existence, however many years, but.
Okay.
Just things to consider. Uh, I, you know, I didn't go into this knowing I had the fifty, I didn't know it was gonna be two hundred and ten. Once we started pulling this together, um. Uh, can we scale it back probably, or hopefully find some savings this fiscal year? That we can roll into next year to use to help pay for this kind of thing, if we were to get awarded.
And if we don't get awarded that grant, what's our option?
I keep looking for other ways to pay for that kind of.
Municipal hovercraft or something.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we'll give everybody.
Evergreen book.
Catapult. I was thinking good news.
It's probably cheaper.
I was just worried about people getting hurt with catapults.
Yes.
Might, it's a possibility.
Big now.
Uh, BPI, uh, staff met with M D O T, Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission. Yet again, to see a theme here, they're really great partners. Um, and right peers to discuss sort of what DOT's issues or concerns were. I mean, they're extremely technical. I didn't feel necessarily competent in putting that out there, so uh, we're working through those. We'll bring the generalized thoughts that DOT had along with the revised report to you. We extended the contract from March fifteenth to now April thirtieth. So I do hope to have this in pretty, the first meeting in April, that's my goal, but I kind of reserved the space to. Deal with it in the second meeting in April if needed. And then nomination papers are out. Uh, they're due back April fourteenth. We have three open seats this year, one with the select board, one with the school board. And one with the Great Salt Bay Sanitary District. As of today, uh, no one has taken papers out for the school board, so please.
Everybody, please.
Spread the word, somebody. Uh, and then lastly, uh, I am gonna uh take some time off at the end of the month. Um, it's my dad's seventieth, and I'm supposed to surprise him. I hope he's not watching this or reading my manager's reports on a regular basis. Cause I really wanna keep it a secret, so. I'll be out the twenty sixth, the twenty seventh. Obviously that Friday, and then the Monday and Tuesday as well.
That'll be fun.
Will be. I hope to get, catch up on some sleep too, but we'll see.
With a four year old in Florida.
I give him to his grandparents. It's fine, right.
Right, right, good move. All right, um. Then I guess. If there's nothing else. All right, without objection, we are adjourned at seven thirty four.
Nice.
Wow. Wow.